Good afternoon, Mr. President. We can open the meeting. Good afternoon, Mr. President. We can open the meeting. He's frozen. This picture is frozen. We have that. We're taking a five-minute pause before we begin the meeting.
Hey, wait. Is the thing in the server connected? Are you, are, did you guys, did you guys take control? Are you guys in my?
And then just so you know, your sound is on.
I see him now.
That's what I'm trying to tell you guys. It's set connected all along, so I don't know where the problem is.
Mr. President, we can start the meeting.
Okay, this meeting of the Essex County Board of Chosen Freeholders is hereby called to order due to the COVID-19 outbreak and in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order. This meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view this meeting via a live stream on YouTube. A link for the live stream is posted on the Freeholder website, wwwecfnj.com. To all participating in the meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. The general public will be able to participate by means of communication equipment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Freeholder Cooper, absent Freeholder Graham.
Here.
Freeholder Johnson.
Here.
Freeholder Luciano.
Here.
Freeholder Ricardo.
Here.
Freeholder Pumares.
Here.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson, absent Freeholder Sebo.
Here.
Freeholder President Gill.
Here.
Okay, we will admit to salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, I'd like to take a moment to pause for a moment of silence. First and foremost, for the 1,907 lost souls that we have lost in the County of Essex. Hard to believe, 1907 people that we have lost in the County of Essex since March due to this pandemic. And also would ask that we also keep in our thoughts and prayers the family of Steve Adobato Senior, affectionately known as Big Steve to many of us. So we send our sincere condolences to his family, ask that we, a moment of silence, both for both the Adobato family and all those that we have lost to this pandemic. Thank you. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I'm sorry, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there are none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we will move to the new, to topics of discussion. Are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session. Today's meeting is a combined conference board meeting, and we'll vote on every item on the agenda. Since we're meeting remotely, the public has had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, the clerk will have additional instructions for our callers. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the callers were given a number to call in, and the call in queue will be managed by our Public Information Officer, Charlo Malumba. And Charlo, do we have any callers?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any callers in the queue at this time.
Okay, Mr. President, we do not have any callers in the queue at this time, and that was for agenda items only. Mr. President, later on in the meeting, for the second public comment, constituents can call in for non-agenda items. I'm turning the meeting back over to you, Mr. President. Oh, Mr. President, I am sorry. There is one email for public comment for agenda item over only. It was an oversight. I will read it now. This email was from Jim Price of Montclair, New Jersey, regarding Resolution 29. "Good afternoon. This is about the money we spend on detainees and where it comes from. One of the unusual commissioners justification for maintaining the ICE contract is that we keep them close to their families. Several weeks ago, 54 detainees were removed by ICE from the Essex County Correctional Facility, according to WNYC News 9/23/2020. It is unusual to see 54 immigrants removed at once. ICE said five were immediately deported while 49 were taken to staging areas to prepare for deportation. Essex County, as the commissioners have told us repeatedly over the past several years, has no control over who ICE moves in or out of the jail. How can you claim to be helping someone when you don't know if he, he'll be in the jail tomorrow? ICE has made it clear by the actions that every jail is just a transit point to deportation or another jail. Let's try a thought experiment. If there was no money to be made on this deal, no $40 million contract, would you still be detaining immigrants? Democrats used to be, used to be the party of immigrants, and now we collaborate with Trump and ICE for money. Crossing a border in hope for a better life should not be illegal. No one is illegal on stolen land. Respectfully, Jim Price." And, Mr. President, that was the only mail, email that we received for agenda items for public comment.
Okay, and we have no, we have no one on the line for for agenda items only?
No, we do not, Mr. President.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, we have two. Ordinance number O2020-00014 and ordinance number O2020-00015.
Hey, Madam Clerk, you can list ordinance number O2020-00014 and 00015 for public hearing at our November 9th meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions on second reading and public hearings this afternoon?
Mr. President, we have none.
Hey, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions number one and two, which we can read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, can I do number two as we're waiting for Mr. Jackson to do number one?
Sure.
Number two is a amendment to the emergency contract extension through December 31st, 2020. Resolution was 20-00340, and it was extensions of the original contract. Inadvertently, two contracts for Public Works were inadvertently left off the list. They are Resolute in 2018-00443 and 2018-00538. Alembo Truck Collision for Repair Service for our fleet and DNS Automobile, and that was for automobile light truck parts. Both of them were supposed to be on a list, on the extension list, and inadvertently they were left off. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, I could hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, Robert. Okay. Just a question. I thought there were two items on the agenda for two ordinances on for second reading? For listing purposes, just, just?
Yep, there, we, we, we went over them.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I just did number one, Robert. On number two. Okay. So, uh, where are we on number two? Number two, we're fine. You have to do number one, sir. Okay, for number one, which one? Oh, God. This is really bad. Resolution number one. This is a, a program that we are going to do, Mr. President and members of the board, with the New Jersey Redevelopment Authority. This is distribution of CARE Act funding in an amount of $9 million, and Mr. O'Parrykey is here to address this item. Sam?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. So, this is, like, Robert said, this is our current-
I'm sorry, Ms. Barrett. Madam Clerk, we still have callers on the line that aren't on mute, so I don't know if our folks can I don't know if our tech support can please mute the other people that you have on the line, but we have a lot of people who are, that you have on the line that you don't have muted.
Noted. We'll make sure that they're muted.
Okay, could proceed.
All right, good evening, good afternoon, Freeholders. My name is Sam O'Parrykey. I'm the Director of Small Business for the, for the County of Essex. The item number one is a rental of small business. Like the county administrators said, we are partnering with the New Jersey Redevelopment Authority. The rental assistance is going to be a maximum of $25,000 for, you know, for business. We're looking to start the program in the next couple of weeks after New Jersey Redevelopment Authority approves the MOU to the board. We believe that this is a very, very good program, only because, as you know, small businesses are struggling right now when they're going through very, very hard times. And we've been trying to find ways to be able to assist them, and this is one of those things where we believe that is going to benefit them tremendously. A lot of them are underwater, a lot of them are behind on their rents, a lot of them are also needing assistance with, you know, current rent and rent going forward. So we believe that this program will serve to assist them. Right now, the program, everything is set. As soon as this is approved and is announced, we're going to begin. We believe that we should be able to assist a little bit over 100, a little bit over 400 small businesses. So, this program is going to be very impactful and beneficial to our small businesses, and I'm ready to ask any questions that you have.
Okay. Mr. Paralekio?
I don't have any questions.
McInerney?
What's, what's the source of the $9 million? Is this coming out of the county's funds of $139,000, or is partially a map?
I believe it is the CARE Act money.
I can't say. It's out of the $139,000, I don't know, $1 million. We gave $10 million to the New Jersey EDA for a program to help small businesses as well. They used approximately $4 million of that, so we're going to take the additional, the $6 million left over and add an additional $3 million of that for the total of the nine, which is going to fund this program.
All right, Robert, can somebody just kind of send me, when you get a chance, just, you know, what came out of the $10 million and then what's left over and what was added in, and the different purposes for the first one and the second one as well?
Okay, and just, just-
Of those, of the, of the CARE Act money for the freeholders, and I don't want to duplicate anything, so-
Right. Just, just so you know, Frank, the one, the $10 million that I referred to came out of the $139,000. We'll send you something, but-
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, right.
But it's not, it's not sending in another nine. It's 10, or, you're right. So I just don't want to get confused with that once I update the schedule. And what's the qualificat, is there been, have we laid out qualifications to receive the, you know, maximum amount of rent subsidy of $25,000?
Uh, yes. Mr. President, through you. Again, this is Sam O'Parrykey. The qualification act follows. Tenants leasing commercial space in mixed-use buildings, tenants leasing commercial space in commercial buildings, storefront businesses that lease their space. You have to have, the premises must be at least 5,000 square feet. Advocates do not have to be delinquent in their rent to qualify. You must be, this is Essex County, and you must have a business registration and tax clearance.
Do I have to supply a tax clearance certificate?
Yes, but we're working on that right now because, I mean, I know they are back, so we-
Yeah, that's going to take some time. Yeah. What about businesses that have closed? These are not businesses that are eligible for the $25,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you have to have a going concern in order for this, to qualify for this. All right, so if you, again, Bob, if you could send me those qualifications, you know, as well, and just to take a look at. But it's, you have to have 5,000 square feet or more, so a lot of the small types of storefronts would, would be disqualified from this.
Well, depending on, because part of, part of what we're trying to do is to see, because again, those are the program guidelines that NJIRA has. So, we're looking to see if we can have some latitude because this is our money, plus we do not have the same kind of constraints that they have. So, basically, we're still negotiating that because we want to make sure that we provide as much assistance to folks that need it as possible. So we don't want to be constrained by those spaces, so we're still, we're still negotiating that.
Right. Is there any employment status qualifications that are assigned to these, to these qualifications to get the money?
No.
Okay. So, because like a small owner of a business can still qualify?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And there's no differentiation between if it's a professional lease or office facility versus a retail facility versus a wholesale? There's no differentiation between those types of uses?
Not particularly, no.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Hey, Freeholders, additional questions? Or comments? Hey, Freeholders, I have a motion from Freeholder Graham and a second from Freeholder Luciano for resolutions one and two. We'll call Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Sebo?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson, absent. Freeholder Ricardo?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper, absent. Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, moving to three and number four, the Office of the County Council. We can read them into the record at a later time.
Thank you, Mr. President. County Council Gassion is here to address these items.
Good afternoon, important Gassion and Essex County Council. Items number three and four are both what I would call housekeeping items. Item number three is approval, or seeking the approval of the execution of a sidewalk maintenance agreement between Essex County and the Township of Verona. What this document does is it memorializes an agreement, a longstanding agreement that the county has had with the Township of Verona. Although it was a verbal agreement, the parties discussed that it makes sense at this time to go ahead and reduce their understanding with regard to the maintenance of this particular sidewalk that runs along Leetside Avenue in Verona as it relates to the maintenance and upkeep of that sidewalk. There was a litigation that was, that occurred in that area several years ago, which gave rise to this discussion, and the parties have now gotten to the point where they've reduced, integrated into their understanding of the maintenance relationship. Verona will continue as they have over the years to maintain this sidewalk. If there are any issues involving trees or tree roots that are, as a result of county property, they will notify the county and the county will take appropriate action. Item number four also has keeping item. This is, again, asking the authorization to enter into a lease extension agreement with the Township of Verona. There was a prior lease for this property located in Verona on the corner of Lynn Drive and Oakfield Avenue. This is a base profile that the township has leased from the county for a very long period of time. The original lease was entered into in 1976. It expired 25 years later, then in 2001. And at that point, the parties never renewed the lease. So this is just a cleanup measure to enter into a new 25-year lease. The parties are going to extend, as I said, for 25 years for an expiration of 2026. The new lease agreement, the relationship remains the same. There is no cost to the township for leasing this property. They will continue to use it for sporting and community events. I'm happy to take questions on either option of the three or number four.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Paralekio?
Yeah, just one question on number three. Other than that litigation you mentioned, is that the only pending issue regarding this piece of property?
Three, Mr. President, yes, that was the only issue, and that case has since been resolved.
And it's been resolved. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. McInerney?
I have no questions.
Freeholders? Okay, a motion from Freeholder Graham and a second from Freeholder Johnson. We'll call Madam Clerk. Resolutions three and four.
Freeholder Cooper, absent. Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson, absent. Freeholder Sebo?
Which, which is here. Yes.
For the record, Mr. President, Freeholder Vice President Richardson is here. Freeholder Sebo?
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, moving to resolution number five. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, this is a bid from, or an award from the Superintendent of Elections Office and the Superintendent Baws here, as well as the vendor, Mr. Brantley.
Madam Superintendent?
Please unmute your phone. Good afternoon.
This is Mr. Brantley.
Good afternoon. This is Edna Ball, Superintendent of Elections, Commissioner of Registration. This is an award of a bid to carry our voting machines and other election materials for the 2021 calendar year. This was a result of a bid, and this was the successful bidder. The Brantley Brothers Moving has worked for the county previous- The, uh, Brantley Brothers Moving has worked for the county previously, and as you can hear, Mr. Brantley, Mr. Tim Brantley is on the line and is available to answer questions from the board and to tell the board a little bit more about Brantley Brothers, Mr. Mr. Brantley.
Good afternoon, this is Tim Brantley from Brantley Brothers. I am the Operation Manager, Sales Manager.
Thanks. Mr. Brantley? Mr. Brantley, can you tell us a little bit more about Brantley Brothers?
Uh, well, Brantley Brothers Moving is storage company incorporated. We've been in business six since 1967. Uh, our location is 168 Elizabeth Avenue, Newark, New Jersey, which is also known as Brantley Plaza. Uh. Founder of the company was. Founder of the company was, uh, father Malachi Brantley. We've been in business, we're going on 54 years. We have, uh, 35 of the 15 employees. All of them are from Essex County. And 95% are minority employees.
Mr. President, this was also, uh, one of our set aside. We had two bidders and Mr. Brantley Company was the lowest bidder at $87.50, and, uh, that would be times per machine, it would become approximately 500 plus, uh, machines that are delivered during the normal time.
Okay, Ms. Parlavickio?
No, no questions.
McInerney?
Is there any kind of special type of equipment you need or transportation equipment you need in order to deliver these voting machines?
Well, this actually is normal moving equipment. What, what we do is, we, uh, we co-manage the machines, we, we pad them, we, first of all, there's a lot of administrative work to this. And we go from that, if there's an inventory that we have to go buy. As far as each machine, if there's any damages to it before we touch it, we take pictures and bring it to Essex County employees, attention. Now, what we do is to manage them, we scan the machines out of the warehouse, and then when we get to their destination, we scan the machines in. When we bring the machines out of the warehouse, we normally, what we always do actually is add the machines and put rubber bands around so they won't damage by moving in the truck or with the truck, going through potholes or what have you. Now, sometimes when we go to destinations, there are no ramps or there are no elevators. So we have to take and carry them up the stairs.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, freeholders, uh, additional questions or comments?
Yes, through you, Mr. President.
Yes, Vice President Richardson.
Yeah, happy to see the Brantley Brothers back, I know they had a contract for some time previously, for whatever reason, it went somewhere else, but I'm glad to have you guys back, to see you back. Uh.
Thank you.
County, working for us, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, hey, this is just a question, this will be, um, as, as needed contract, since we don't know what the election, the manner of the election will be next year?
Edna Ball, Superintendent of Elections, that would be correct, Mr. Chair. Um, we have to see what the landscape looks like next year, but we obviously need to be prepared to be able to move machines for any election that occurs next year where machines are needed.
Okay. Okay, great, um, I have a, I have a motion from Freeholder Johnson and a second from Freeholder Luciano, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Siebel?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper, absent, Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, uh, moving to Resolution Number Six, Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, uh, Director Fishman is here to address this item.
Good afternoon, uh, Freeholders, Commissioners, uh, President Gill. Um, I am Eileen Fishman, the Director of Community Health Services for Essex County. Uh, this is, uh, a letter of intent, uh, for a budget insertion that is an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 for the purposes of Special Child Case Management Grant. Um, case management addresses the needs, uh, of children who have special needs from birth to 21 years of age. And, um, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Parlavickio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Freeholders, any questions or comments? Okay, I have a mover from Freeholder Luciano and a second from Freeholder Mercado, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Cooper, absent, Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Siebel?
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, moving to Resolution Number Seven, uh, Mr. Jackson?
Uh, Mr. President, Mr. Lombardi is here to address this item.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, this is Craig Lombardi, Project Coordinator for the Essex County Division of Housing and Community Development. I am speaking on behalf of Director George Siriou. Uh, this item is a request for authorization to execute a contract between Benavante, a software developer, and a Division of Housing and Community Development. Uh, Benavante has developed, uh, the neighborly, excuse me, the neighborly software portal, which our office has been utilizing, uh, to manage the applications for CDBG funds and CDBG CV funding. This contract would extend our use of the software for CDBG as well as add the capacity to manage our home program and our ESG program. Um, and to, to date, uh, this software has enhanced our effectiveness to, uh, process applications. It's allowed for off-site management of projects during the pandemic. And it's also provides for online storage of applicable documents that will be, uh, easily accessible, uh, when needed in the future. And that, that basically describes the, uh, the program that we're looking for funding for.
Okay, Ms. Parlavickio?
I don't have any.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Okay, freeholders, any questions? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion from Freeholder Mercado and a second from Freeholder Primaris, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Siebel?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper, absent, Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, moving to Resolutions Number Eight through 11, which are from the Division of Training and Employment. Read it into the record at a later time, uh, we'll take all of them, uh, please, Mr. Jackson.
Hello?
I think Mr. Jackson is on mute.
Yes, Julius, we can hear you.
Hi, good afternoon, Freeholders Commissioners, this is Director Monk from the Division of Training and Employment. Um, Agenda Items Eight to Eleven are federally funded, uh, Workforce Innovative Opportunity Act funding. Um, Item Number Eight, we had our summer, uh, summer work readiness program for disadvantaged youth aged 16 to 24 that, uh, while they were working, they needed to have, uh, work readiness, uh, component once a week virtually. So Coast on Call provided that service for us and we are paying on that contract, um, for our virtual services. Nine to 11 is new funding that we received from the New Jersey State Department of Labor via the federal government to provide, uh, training services for youth 16 to 24 and for all unemployed adults and Title II adults who are looking to get training. New Jersey Department of Labor, um, has given authorization to all the vocational training schools throughout the state to provide training virtually for anyone that is interested. If you saw the governor's, uh, press conference today, they also received more money for workforce development programs to help, um, individuals have been dispratized by the COVID epidemic. But this is our normal funding, which we do every year. Um, the savings base with this is that every year, when, when we normally do an RFP, we always put in there the option to renew, one-year renewal, in case something like the pandemic comes up or funds are, are not available, so we're acting on our option to renew because we wasn't able to RFP properly this year. These services will be provided to, um, any individuals who want to go back to training, to receive CNA, um, to receive project management, get their DED, um, any kind of training, Microsoft, any training that is part of New Jersey's Workforce Development Plan.
Okay, Ms. Parlavickio, that's, uh, was that number?
I think that was, he did eight and then nine through 11 were all, uh, new funding opportunities.
Okay, why don't we, you want, anything more we want to add for nine through 11?
Not for me, Mr. President.
Okay, so, freeholders, we're doing eight through 11. No further questions, Mr. Parlavickio?
No, no further questions.
McInerney, any further questions?
No further questions.
Freeholders, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion from Freeholder Primaris and a second from Freeholder Vice President Richardson to take Resolutions Eight through 11, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, for the record, Freeholder Cooper is here, uh, Freeholder Cooper?
Yes.
Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Siebel?
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, uh, moving to Resolutions Number 12 through 15 from the Division of Community Action. Can read each of them into the record at a later time, Mr. Jackson?
Uh, Mr. President, Mr. Terrence McCoy is here to deal with these items.
Good afternoon, Freeholders, my name is Terrence McCoy from the Division of Community Action and I'm before you today to amend the current agreement that, uh, Essex County has with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for our CSBG COVID-19 CARES Act Fund to continue with our preventive services to all of the residents in Essex County who have been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic with, uh, preventive homelessness services for rental, back rent, mortgage, utilities and so forth. And that's, uh, for Number 12, and then we have 13, 14 and 15, which are the subcontracted agencies that provide said services, which is East Orange Community Development Corporation, Number 13. Number 14 is Irvington Neighborhood Corpora, Improvement Corporation, and Number 15, Marklear Neighborhood Development Corporation.
Okay, uh, Ms. Parlavickio?
Uh, no, uh, no questions for me, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
Are, are these additional COVID KRX monies?
Yes, they are, do you, President Freeholder, this is additional money that we're getting and this grant goes all the way until September 30th of 2022.
Okay, um, just bear with me, sir. So that's for 12, 13, 14.
12, 13, 14 and 15, yes.
Okay. And, uh, okay, I think I've already entered these since the leadership meeting, all right, thank you very much.
No problem.
Freeholders, just some questions or comments? Okay, I have a motion from Vice President Richardson and a second from Freeholder Siebel to take Resolutions 12 through 15, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Siebel?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson? Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper?
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved, through you, Mr. President, just a reminder, please, if you're not talking, keep your phone or, um, speaker on mute, um, we continue to hear periodically background noises.
Okay, moving to, these are Number 16, uh, through 20, which are from the Department of Public Works, we can read each of them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, Mr. Vargas is here to address actually Items 16 through, and 17, 19 and 20, and, uh, Director Ortiz will address, uh, Item 18. So, um, Mr. Vargas, if you could do 16 through 17 and 19 and 20, please?
Yep, uh, this is Sanji Vargas, the county engineer. Resolution 16 is, uh, an, an extension of the existing contract to, uh, maintain and service the handicap ramps we have in the Hall of Records. Uh, this is a two-year extension, there was a contract which is expiring by the end of the year, and, uh, this will take that contract for two more years. There are six, uh, handicapped lifts throughout the building, um, and this has to be maintained and inspected routinely. It's a two-year contract for $33,000. And they were, they are the current contractors. Resolution 17 is again, uh, it's a, not to exit contract to maintain all the computers in the service in the Department of Public Works, it's a two-year contract, uh, for $110,000 not to exit. We typically spend between $25,000 to $30,000. Uh, again, this is an existing contract, we are extending it for two more years. Uh, Resolution 18, even though I'll list there, I can just explain that the contract, this is a new bullet recovery system at the, uh, Essex County College, the Police Academy. There was a system there before, uh, when the Essex County College was operating it. Uh, the system is not functional, so this is a brand-new system. This will eliminate any human contact with the bullet shells, uh, the conveyor system will collect, automatically collect and, and dispose it into a container, and this is a brand-new. And this is a brand-new system. This will eliminate all the cross-contamination and the lead poisoning and all those things. The vendor is a local vendor from the storage. They have worked with us in several projects. Their name is Grill Construction. There was only one bid. Resolution nineteen is a two-year contract for photo parts. There are two vendors. There were eight bids. This is two-year contract for not to exceed $400,000. Resolution twenty is for vehicle repairs for two years. Again, there are two vendors. One is for the east, and one is for the west. It's for two years. It's not to exceed $400,000.
Mr. Ortiz, did you have anything to add for eighteen? We can move ahead, Mr. President.
I can answer any question if you have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Parlovickio?
No questions.
McInerney?
What's, yeah, I'd like, what's a bullet recovery system?
It's when they do the test, the bullet practice in the shooting range, the bullet shells get discharged, and that has the lead residue in the bullet shells. And right now, there is no conveying system to automatically, they used to have one. And when the college was operating it, it was not functioning, and they removed it. So there is nothing there. Now, human people have to go there and collect all these things by hand, and there is a possibility of contamination.
What is it, like a magnet or something? I'm just curious.
No, it's a, the bullet shells goes into a conveyor system. The conveyor goes into a container. It's all sealed, so it's a conveyor system. It's like a belt takes all the bullet shells into a conveyor, into a container.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Any additional questions, Mr. McInerney?
I'm sorry, no, no.
Okay, Freeholders, questions on sixteen through twenty? Okay, I have a motion from Freeholder Cooper and a second from Freeholder Graham to take sixteen through twenty as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Freeholder Sebo.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, moving to resolutions twenty-one through twenty-five, which are from the Department of Parks. We can read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Mr. Zaitz is here to address items twenty-one through twenty-five.
Number twenty-one is a contract award to Nisswich to provide furnish and deliver the animal food to the zoo from January 1st of next year through December 31st of 2022, amount not to exceed 300,000. This is for food for just about all of the animals in the zoo's inventory, with the exception of cats, hyenas, sea lions, and fish. Number twenty-two is a contract award to Geese Chasers North Jersey to provide Canadian beef control. This is exercising a fifteen-month contract not to exceed $68,528.40. Specifically, this contract will run from March 15th, 2021, to October 31st, 2021, then pick up again March 15th of 2022, and run through October 31st of 2022. The services are for Barona Park, Rover Cleveland Park, Monty Urban Orange Park, Branch Brook Park, and Yerba Cal Park. Number twenty-three is a contract award to Plainfield Fruit and Produce to furnish and deliver produce to the Turtleback Zoo. It would begin October this year through December 31st of next year, amount not to exceed 200,000. And this is for produce for all the animals in the collection over at the zoo. Number twenty-four and number twenty-five are related, and then number twenty-four is the funding mechanism for number twenty-five. Number twenty-four is authorization to use the Essex County Recreation Business Base Trust Fund to fund solid waste picked up throughout the Essex County Park System in an amount not to exceed $489,305. And number twenty-five is the actual contract award to Direct Waste Services, which was the sole responsible bidder to provide collection, transportation, and disposal of solid waste, which would be a two-year agreement, amount not to exceed $489,304. Specifically, the contract would run from the date of award through November 30th of this year, then would pick up again March 17th, 2021, until November 30th of 2021, and then it would pick up once again March 17th, 2022, until September 30th, 2022. And I do believe we have a representative from the company on the line.
Steve Love Shine, CFO of Direct Waste, and we should have Javier Roman, who is the General Manager of Direct Waste.
I'm here.
Hello?
Yes, would you please tell us a little bit about your company and your experience with the county, please?
Sure. Direct Waste has been doing with the incumbent, so we had to look on this, and before that, as far as the company goes, Direct Waste has been around for about thirty-six years. We do about $35 million a year in revenues. We do most of the parks in the, throughout the fourteen counties that we are entitled to do work with. We also handle most of the schools, Rutgers, County Morris, many others that we deal with. So again, we've been doing this for quite some time, and we definitely handle all of the needs that you guys have.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parlovickio?
Yes, I do have a question on twenty-four and twenty-five, but I think it's for Mr. Zaitz, not for the vendor. Josh, you said, I think when you said, when you were talking about the term of the contract, there was a break, and it was more seasonal. How is it collected, if I'm right? How is it collected in those non-contract periods?
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks, through you, Mr. President. During the lull in the contract, the park system itself would collect and dispose of the garbage. Typically, the busy season for Mark Wilson is through March through December, when this contract would be in, being used. And then there's kind of a lull with garbage and disposal of use overall of the park system in November through the beginning of March. So at that time, the county has enough staff and resources to collect the waste itself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. McInerney?
Yes, I have a question. With, outside of the maintenance work and the fringe benefits that comes out of Open Space Trust Fund annually, I don't think I've seen a contract come out of Open Space Trust Fund for years. Was this contract last year at Open Space Trust Fund?
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks, through you, Mr. President. Keep in mind, the last time we awarded this contract would have been, I believe, 2018, which would have been the twenty-four-month option of the original 2016 contract. And the 2018 contract was definitely paid out of Open Space. I believe the 2016 one was as well, but I would have to double-check. But the eighteen definitely was.
Okay, so, so let me just, so that's a few years ago, and that, that's pretty consistent with my memory. I couldn't tell you which one. But with regard to other contracts coming out of Open Space, are there any other contracts that are either, did come out of Open Space for this year or are planned on coming out of? Again, above and beyond this contract, and above and beyond the maintenance workers and the fringe benefits that go along with that.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks, through you, Mr. President. I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but off the top of my head, I don't believe there are any maintenance contracts that would be consistent like this. As the board knows, we would pay for some A&E engineering services for, you know, various design for some park projects. But I don't believe anything other than what Mr. McInerney mentioned is currently coming out of Open Space.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Freeholders?
Freeholder President?
Yes, Freeholder Cooper?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm clear. One resolution is to authorization the expense of the money from the trust fund, and other resolution is the award of the contract.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks, through you, Mr. President. That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Freeholders, additional questions or comments? Okay, I have a motion from Freeholder Sebo and a second from Freeholder Johnson to take resolutions twenty-one through twenty-five as one.
I will take roll call, Mr. President. Freeholder Sebo.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, thanks, Madam Clerk. Moving to resolution number twenty-six, which is from the Division of the Hospital Center. We can read it into the record at a later time.
Through you, Mr. President. Can I take this opportunity to just give out some information for public comment, for second public comment?
Sure.
For second public comment for non-agenda items, you are to call into this number, and the number is 855-756-7520. And you're to use the password 67845. Password 67845. You will acknowledge, acknowledge and put into a queue, and you will have three minutes to speak when we get to that part of the agenda. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving to resolution twenty-six, which is from the Division of the Hospital Center. We can read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, this is a twenty-four-month contract extension to Sharger Property Services to provide landscape services for our hospital center. Seven months service at $18, $1800 per month paid for from operating funds.
No.
Through you, Mr. President. Another reminder, please mute your mics if you're not talking. We are hearing your background noise or conversation. Thank you. Mr. Jackson, you were muted. You were muted. Okay.
I'm done with item twenty, I'm done with the item. Can you not hear me?
I can hear you.
We can hear you, Mr. Jackson, so with number twenty-six, you reviewed it, Mr. Parlovickio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Okay, Freeholders? Okay, hearing or seeing none, I have a motion from Freeholder Johnson and a second from Freeholder Luciano. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Freeholder Sebo.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number twenty-seven, which is from the Office of the Sheriff. We can read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, this is from, as you said, the Office of the Sheriff. This is a two-year contract extension option not to exceed $100,000 to provide and install vehicle graphics. This is, that was done earlier through our set-aside program. It's a veteran-owned business from the city of Newark, and this is paid for through operating funds.
Okay, Mr. Parlovickio?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. McInerney?
No questions.
Freeholders, questions or comments? Okay, hearing or seeing none, I have a motion from Freeholder Luciano and a second from Freeholder Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Sebo.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson. Freeholder Pumares.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving to resolutions number twenty-eight and twenty-nine, which are from the Department of Corrections. We can read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Director Ortiz is here to address items twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Director?
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Al Faro Ortiz, Director, Essex County Correctional Facility for item twenty-eight. It is requesting and advocating for the passage of this contract to purchase ammunition for our semi-annual qualifications and training purposes, and the purchase of other sundry relevant firearms equipment. And the second one is the item twenty-nine, and it's for the purchase of ID bands. These are bands that are clear in nature, much like a wristband, and it has the picture, the identifying information, date of birth, SBI number of an individual under our care and custody. We use that to maintain our census, and if an individual, you know, has an episode of a medical, we know who that person is, very important to our running of our facility. So I request the passage of both of these items.
I'm happy to answer any question, if necessary.
Parlovickio?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Freeholders, questions? Okay, I have a motion from Freeholder Mercado and a second from Freeholder Pomeris. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Freeholder Siebel.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So move.
Okay, moving to resolution number thirty and thirty-one. I'm sorry, moving to resolu-, yes, we just, actually, resolution's thirty, thirty-one, Office of the Prosecutor, um, Jackson.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, County Council, uh, Gassiano will handle number thirty, and I will handle number thirty-one. County Council?
Thank you. Courtney Gassiano, SS County Council. Um, resolution number thirty is a request for the approval of professional services agreement. Uh, this was an RFP, uh, for continuing, uh, legal education consultant and public safety academy training administrator. Uh, this is a contract awarded to Hillary Purnell and amount now to sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the contract year is from October of twenty-twenty through October of twenty-twenty-one. Um, Ms. Purnell has been the, um, administrator, um, and consultant for the, uh, last several contract periods. Um, and she assists, uh, the prosecutor's office as well as the Public Safety, uh, Academy in providing training to both recruits as well as return staff in the prosecutor's office, and I will note my office as well is able to take advantage of the training offered through, um, Ms. Purnell's services that she, um, provides for the prosecutor's office. I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, for item thirty-one, uh, Mr. President, this is a professional service agreement with Ms. Nancy Cox. Uh, one year in amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand four ninety-six. Um, this is the same vendor as last year. Um, the funding is split between operating funds and a, and a grant that we receive. Uh, and we actually expended, uh, all of the money, uh, during our last, uh, contract. Um, and it's, she provides, uh, forensic nursing services and, and, uh, support for the sexual assault response team in the Office of the Prosecutor. That's it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Paralecchio?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Freeholders? Okay, seeing none. I have a motion from Freeholder Pumares and a second from Vice President Richardson, uh, to take thirty and thirty-one as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Siebel.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Uh, Freeholder Pumares.
Yes.
Freeholder Ricardo.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So move.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, okay, we have, uh, resolutions thirty-two through, uh, forty-seven. We have a mover in Freeholder Vice President and a sec-, uh, Richardson and a second from Freeholder Siebel for thirty-two to forty-seven. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, may I please be included in number forty-one?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk. Roll call.
Freeholder Siebel?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Ricardo?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yeah.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper?
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So move.
Madam Clerk, let's report, uh, move to report of board committees. Legislative reports. Written communication. Unfinished business. New business. Okay, public comment, Madam Clerk.
Um, Mr. President, before you go there, I would like to get just a quick board committee report, please.
Okay, go back to report of board committees. Freeholder Cooper.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. We held a, um, TNR committee meeting last week. I want to thank the administration, Mr. Jackson and his staff for joining us, as well as the, um, director, her name escapes me right now, from the mobile, um, clinic that we had, um, approved the, a pro-, a proposal for from last year. We had a very, um, lively discussion about the status of the TNR program. And Mr. Jackson and his team offered some wonderful suggestions, and so we're looking forward to a, um, another proposal to come from the, um, from the group that we're working with where we will look at bringing in a professional trapper to help us address some of the feral cats within SS County as well as sponsoring, um, potential training so that we can train and empower folks within the cat community that's interested in working to address the issues within, um, feral cats. So that's it for us. We expect to probably meet in about another month, and we'll bring another report back to the board. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Freeholder Cooper. Any other, uh, board committee reports? Okay, legislative, uh, written, unfinished business, new business. Madam Clerk, let's go to the public comments session on non-agenda items. Um, uh, the public has had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration, and they also have the opportunity to call in on non-agenda items, Madam Clerk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm going to ask our public information officer, do we have any calls in queue?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Chalamalumba, Public Information Officer, for the not have any calls in queue at this time.
Mr. President, I will read, um, uh, the, the emails that we received. And, um, one comment is, was for agenda items, um, that was an oversight, and this was from, um, Matt Dragon. Um, on, this is on resolution twenty-eight regarding Department of Corrections. As you hopefully already seen and read about in the great detail, five hundred and forty-five children have been lost by DHS. Uh, the parent agency of ICE, but lost isn't really the right word. They were knowingly taken from their parents' place with other families or worse, or caged. Uh, this was done without maintaining the identities and locations of those children such that DHS intentionally and knowingly cut any ties between those children and their parents. These are the same people that we have a contract to house prisoners at ICE. We are regularly told that this contract was set up under a prior federal administration. Told that we just have to hope that the policies change under a future administration, but let's place ownership where it should be. We made almost ten million from the contract in twenty-eighteen, the year after the family separation policy separated these children. What are the odds that at least one of those dollars was for holding a parent who had their child ripped away from them? What are the odds that that child is one of those lost children? Is it worth being associated with these atrocities committed by ICE for one dollar, four thousand, four million? Or is it only worth it for the full ten million? Our county is profiting off of this contract. We are profiting off detaining individuals who have committed only a civil offense. We are profiting either directly or indirectly off kidnapping children. Outside your office, the street calls for you and all of us to abolish white supremacy. In a world that is, in a world, in what world is white people ripping black and brown children from their parents and losing them and ensuring that they can never be reunited, not seen as an act of white supremacy. Thank you, Matt Dragon, West Orange. Uh, the next, uh, email we have is from Jim Price of Montclair. And, sorry. The, the comment is, is by, uh, Biana Miller, no address given. I'm contacting you to express my outrage that SS County continues to contact ICE to, continues to contract with ICE. COVID-nineteen is on the rise in the Northeast, but so is ICE enforcement. People like Julio, uh, Colcos are being caught in this surge. Julio received humanitarian parole and was released from the SS County Jail by ICE in April, but was re-detained last week for no apparent reason and sent back to the SS County Jail where he tested positive for COVID-nineteen. Now Julio is in what is effectively solitary confinement due to his diagnosis and increased risk due to his age. There's one thing that explains Julio's re-detention. However, it is a motivating factor behind all ICE operations, cruelty. Cruelty is the point. It doesn't matter who ends up in the White House in twenty-twenty-one. ICE cannot be trusted. It always use cruelty to force people to give up on any claim that they have to stay in the United States. The fact is that it is a brutal agency that is acting out racist policies in a general side, a gen-, uh, that you're helping them. ICE and its detention facilities cannot be re-, be reformed. They all must be shut down, including yours. SS County has profited from the system for far too long. We want you to cancel your contract with ICE immediately. Will you have the courage to do your part and exercise your power to abolish this system and terminate your contract with ICE? You need to find another way to run SS County that does not rely on incarcerating people for money. Your continued support for ICE is proving that criminalization and dehumanization of people who cross the borders knows no political party. I look forward to your response. The same comments and questions were submitted by Sarah Melendez. The next, um, comment is from Alana Horowitz Friedman, no address given. I was, I raised this issue previously, and I will, I want to raise it again today. Why is SS County still contracting with ICE? I submitted a public comment last month's meeting, and the response I received did not even bother to answer all the questions I posed. As such, I would like to repeat the ones it ignored. This board has continuously claimed that the contract is in place to prevent transfers to other facilities. However, if this is the case, why isn't the contract revenue neutral? What are some responsible ways that we can work as a community to end this contract and help support the people who are currently detained? In response to my question about the profits from this contract are not going directly into the legal support for the detained, detained, the board mentioned uh, that one million is going to some legal services. I want to point out how extremely small this percentage of profits is and your call, and call your attention once again to the moral issues without being complicit in an abusive system like ICE as well as profiting substantially from it. If you are actually doing this for the good of the people detained, you would dedicate all profits towards legal services and immigrant advocacy organizations. Please use your power to end this complicity with ICE and abuse system that strips away any human dignity and separates families. Terminate the contract. The next comment was submitted by Kathy O'Leary of Pax Christie, New Jersey. Dear Board of Commissioners, it is with great disappointment that I type yet again another message, uh, to you regarding the ICE contract. In speaking with Phil Elijah last week, it appears that the administration has grown content with what it believes will be the outcome of the upcoming presidential election. No matter who is in the White House, it still is you, the elected body. You will be trading black and brown bodies for revenue. Further, I offer you this reading from the book of, uh, Sorak, "The bread of clarity is life itself for the needy. Whoever withholding is a murderer. To take away a neighbor's living is to commit murder, to deny a laborer wages, to shed blood. For every person you incarcerate for ICE, people like Julio, uh, Colcos, you separate them from their families and deprive them of their livelihood. It has been said many times before that this is blood money contract. There is no denying that blood is on your hands. Sincerely, Kathy O'Leary, Pax, Christie, New Jersey." Um, the final comment was, uh, submitted by Jeffrey S. Fell Esquires of Short Hills. Would you please start the clock? Three minutes? Thank you. Uh, this is regarding SS County, uh, Board of Chosia Freeholders. Uh, dear SS County Board of Freeholders, I respectfully request this letter be included in the October twenty-first, twenty-twenty virtual meeting agenda. Limited public comments official public record. This le-, letter incorporates and supplements all my earlier unanswered letters to the freeholders, including but not limited to my July eighth, twenty-twenty, August third, twenty-twenty, and September eighth, twenty-twenty unanswered letters. You don't need a weatherman to know which way the wind blows. Bob Dialin. This election is a watershed moment. This election must be a repudiation of democracy and lies as tools of governments. Editorial, we deserve so much better. The Star Ledger, October twelfth, twenty-twenty. A law doesn't work if you're too incompetent or too politically frightened to enforce it. Governor Andrew Cuomo. Nice guys are those who sit back and do nothing. Steven N. Abado Senior. In a society of laws driven by centers of economic and financial power, if courts are not available for the average person to seek justice, then the average person will not receive justice. Bernard Cohen, a lawyer and landmark mixed marriage case. This is a very strange situation. I do not believe in coincidence, coincidence. I am no stranger to this board since my last written communication, the legal landscape has shifted. Accordingly, my, uh, comments and questions should not be dismissed out of hand. I respectfully urge extreme independent fiduciary prudence and caution. On September the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, the state local finance board rejected this board's curtailment of virtual civic participation and the suppression of the robust marketplace of competing ideas. See local finance no-, notice twenty-twenty dash twenty-one, new emergency regulations regarding public meetings held during a declared emergency, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. Uh, thirty seconds. Um, on September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, the State Department of Local Government Services issued quarterly newsletter directing stakeholders to notify career professionals, professional prosecutors of perceived violations of the Open Public Meetings Act and virtual civic participation prior to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This board bifurcation, uh, public, public comments between agenda and non-agenda item, public comments. Um, under the board's new posted virtual civic participation rules, a stakeholder is limited to just one opportunity to address the board. In addition, by submitting written comments in advance, a stakeholder waives his or her right to participate orally during the meeting. Um, that is three minutes. The, the complete entirety of this letter will be submitted into, to the record. Mr. President, that includes our public, second public comments section.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, of course, all, uh, all comments will be responded to in writing. Uh, Freeholder comment session. Freeholders, any additional comments? Okay, hearing or seeing one, I, none. I have one comment, just, um, just a reminder that, uh, our next meeting, uh, will be on Wednesday, November ninth. Um, so between now and November ninth, um, would urge, since we're not going to be meeting again, uh, would urge, uh, all of those who are watching and all of our constituents, uh, to please participate, uh, in the election, um, and vote, um, on November third. Um, I don't think there's anything more important to be done, um, between now, uh, now and our meeting, um, on the ninth, uh, and to take advantage, um, also of the accessibility of the drop boxes, um, that the county has placed, uh, throughout our, uh, throughout every, each and every municipality. Uh, the turnout in the county is, um, uh, been exceedingly high, which is great to see. Um, uh, I want to give, uh, keeping the fingers crossed, early compliment, Mr. Jackson, to, uh, all of our election officials, constitutional officers and election officials, uh, for everything that they have done up to this point to have what, uh, what I believe to be an exceedingly smooth and an accessible process, uh, in putting it together in a short amount of time. So, um, and we hope, uh, So, um, and we hope, uh,
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, we hope that the counting goes just as, uh, just as smooth and, and quickly as possible, again, when the polls close. But, again, would urge all my, uh, all of our constituents to please, uh, participate in this process and vote, uh, by, on November third, whether voting by mail, uh, or, um, at a polling location on Election Day.
Mr. President?
Sure.
Through you, uh, the meeting i- is Monday, November ninth.
Well, Monday, November ninth, yes, it does, it is correct on the sheet, I apologize. Monday, November ninth. Um, I assume since, uh, that Wednesday is a, a, uh, a holiday, correct? Veterans' Day.
Yep, that's right.
So thank you for that correction, Monday, November ninth. Okay, Freeholders, do I have a motion?
Mr. President, just a, just a point of information for the board, um, we've, we've received about one hundred and sixty thousand, um, ballots, uh, to date, and of that, one hundred and thirteen thousand of them have been through the boxes at the different locations, uh, municipal buildings and so forth. So seventy plus, seventy percent plus of the voting that has gone on has been through those special boxes, which is, which is incredible to me.
Yes, awesome.
Yeah, that's, that's fan-, that's, uh, that's fantastic. Um, and I think that, um, I would not be surprised if, um, if seventy percent of our eligible voters voted before Election Day, um, countywide, very, very possible. So, um, just again, uh, we have a lot more work to do, and, and no one's taken a victory lap just yet, but, um, just the distribution of the drop boxes, uh, the accessibility of the education campaign that our election officials have undertaken, um, and the response from the electorate has been very, very positive. So, uh, just thank you for all the, you know, I know it's a tremendous amount of work, thank you for what everybody's doing.
Thank you.
Uh, any additional questions, uh, or comments?
Through, through you, Mr. President, um, everything you just stated, very well said, and, uh, I concur with everything you just said. And make sure you vote, get those votes in, don't wait, get them to those boxes, you know? This is not business as usual, so let's get those votes in, get them in early.
Without. Yeah, I couldn't, couldn't agree with more, Mr. Vice President, and, uh, this is, you know, this is a public meeting, so I want to be clear, this is not a partisan political comment. Uh, but when the, uh, the President of the United States was asked, uh, today if he would have done, uh, this is an on-the-record comment, and I do not say this for any partisan political, I'm just repeating what the President said, he was, when he was asked today if he would have done anything differently, uh, to respond to the COVID crisis, and he said no. So I'll leave that there. Any additional questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, thanks, Mr. Vice President.
Take a long motion.
Take care, everyone.
Take care.